...agree that these services that we provided were important and necessary. Chief Mills wanted to talk with Karen, his main point of contact in these matters, about the tent's future. We ended the meeting by agreeing to keep an open line of communication going forward. It seemed like a very productive meeting, and I told my fellow protesters as such. We discussed next steps in this process while having the most peaceful weekend we had had since the protest started. No arrests for the first time since September. Then, on Tuesday, October 28th, before Karen had a chance to talk to Chief Mills, a couple of officers posted a notice on our tent saying we had to take it down by Thursday at 10:00 a.m. You have my contact info. You could have called me, you could have emailed me, but you chose to post the note, like cowards. We decided to call the media and have them show up on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. to see Broadview take down our tent. But you waited until 6:30 that night, when most of us had dispersed and the media had left to tear down our tent and grab supplies out of our hands, like cowards. On Saturday, we were angry. Broadview had taken down the lone beacon of hope in that dark corner. And then, you started firing chemicals at us. You left us defenseless, and then you opened fire, like cowards! That will forever be your legacy, Broadview. You cleared out our last line of defense to roll out the welcome mat for the fascist regime. Shame on you, Mayor Thompson, and this entire board for allowing this to happen. Shame on you, Chief Mills and Broadview PD, for grabbing first-aid supplies out of our hands and then turning around and firing at us! May God have mercy on your souls, because the history books certainly won't!
Next is Rabbi Michael Ben-Luson.
Rabbi.
Greetings to the mayor and constituents, my fellow protesters who were standing on the front lines. Today, I'm invoking the supremacy clause in Article 6 of the Constitution that states the Constitution, federal laws and treaties are the supreme law of the land. This means federal law takes precedence over your ordinance. This article that takes immediate precedence over your ordinance of the law is the Freedom Religious Restoration Act of 1993, passed by not the Senate and signed into law in 1993, prohibits any agency, department, or officials of the United States or any state, the government, from burdening persons exercising their religious freedoms to do out, carry out his duties. So today, I'm invoking my constitutional rights to go into the areas of Broadview on 1930 B Street, and it should be 24/7, because there's no specifications in this Constitution that gives it 96. So I'm invoking, this Saturday, I'll be able to go protest and then go in before, beyond the state police, Broadview Police, and House Agents to go up to that building. If you prohibit me from carrying out my duties of the constitutional rights, I will be filing laws against you, Mayor, and against the city of Broadview, and against the state police for providing or preventing me to carry out my duties as a religious clerk. Thank you so much.
Next is Bodo Sahin.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous, bear with me. I want to speak about what happened this weekend, I think it's important to point So... It was pretty concerning. There was a large number of police presence from multiple towns, and streets were shut down. There was tear gas deployed at the protesters. Many of us were surrounded in the evening by police officers. And they repeatedly told us we were in violation of Statute 720 ILCS 5 underscore 25 dash 1, which refers to mob action, the people using force, violence, or disturbing the peace. But that's not what we were doing. We were peacefully protesting. There was no threat, no violence from the protesters. Actually, the violence came from the officers. And I think part of it was that the law was not prepared for the amount of people that showed up on Saturday. It was a large crowd. Instead of adjusting for the safety, the officers escalated the situation. Our protest area is very restricted. It's a small space, and it was definitely not able to handle the crowd that showed up that day, and that was a big part of the problem. Sorry. Another concern was obviously the aid tent that was there. We didn't have that aid tent there, so we were not able to provide rescue efforts to those that were tear gassed. It was a tough situation. I want to stress the importance of why we are protesting. There are families that are showing up daily to that facility center, trying to get information about their family members. We are concerned about the inhumane situation that these people that are being detained are living in that facility.
That's your time, thank you. Next is Linda Barker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Barker, and I'm a resident of Broadview Saturday. My heart goes out for all the things that are going on in Broadview, but something that's been affecting me since '21. I filed a request asking that my garbage, this might sound crazy, my garbage needs to be picked up in a different location from where they designated me to roll my cans. At one time, I was able to do this, but after I had surgery, I was unable to. I reside in my house, my sister resides in my house. I'm 75, my sister's 73. All we're asking for is our garbage cans be picked up on the other side of our fence. I was told by Mr. Ames that if things were changed to meet my needs, they would have to do it for everyone. I rest my case.
Next is Francine Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight because this has been a long time coming, and I'm proud, I stand proud tonight to come and face you, Mayor, and you, Chief Mills, given the honor that you guys have not been transparent with me, and I can now pass this regarding my son's murder, which was brand new, Smith, that took place in 2017. You guys had told me from day one that it was a cold case. No investigation was fully investigated upon his case. Regardless of what anyone thought of my son, he was a son, he was a grandson, and he was a father, a brother, and a nephew. We, as constituents, are paying you guys to do it, because the transparency and accountability has not been there. And I have asked to make appointments with you, Mayor, that I've been denied. My mother is 89 years old, and the way my mother was treated that night was unacceptable. You guys kept my mother in a house that's sickly bedridden and could not get her medication. She stripped of all of her rights, and didn't even know the seclusion of numbers were known of my son. When she tried to attempt to save his life, your officers pushed her away and told her to get away home, others are registered now, and have been for 30 plus years. We have been residents of Broadview for 40 plus years, and this is where it stops, because this is a circus, and you can ring a window, and it stops here. It stops. Because I don't care what anybody say, "I'm a mother just like you is," you would think you would have some compassion and reach out and respect the fact I lost a son, and my life ain't been the same. And I deserve that. He deserved that. Regardless of what anybody thought about him, he's, like I said, he was a human being. This is not right. And if this is what you're gonna do, you need to rebury yourself.
Next is Eric Smith.
Good evening. I'm not here about protests, or that's my sister Francine, everything she said is true, and with the protest that everything, everything is true. I've seen it myself, I've seen it on my phone, the way they just mistreat them for no reason. But the only other thing I'm concerned about, and my mom is concerned about, is a piece of paper. She needs the piece of paper of the ordinance that y'all said, that y'all hear about abandoned vehicles that's causing wreck problems or whatever. And y'all have the garbage cans and the garbage that's not getting picked up that's causing wreck problems in Broadview. But, at the same time, y'all removed all of the cars from one side of Broadview saying that they were abandoned. And the other side of Broadview, the cars are still sitting there, no license plates, no registration or nothing. And I want to know, y'all picking and choosing or what? That's all I need to say.
Noah Smith? Noah Smith? No, you can't.
Good evening, Broadview. Yes. My issue is similar to other residents here in Broadview. I'm not here for personal vendettas, I'm not here for tragedies. I'm here to ask why we have over 25 abandoned buildings, 30 empty or more business spaces, we have no CPA on staff, we've been wearing during political and personal retaliation on our residents, our government is ignoring cease and desist orders, and we've heard about alleged theft from our park districts and elementary schools by our one and only mayor. We're trying to figure out when is enough enough. Our mayor has more than just you all to worry about. She has more than just what we're worried about. But what her concern should be is what you people are enduring here in this room, what our residents are enduring, the pain, the suffering, and the anguish that we're enduring on a daily basis.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you all are aware, but our mayor has a beautiful business that's called Amori Strategies. It is a sex toy, body cream, oil, and game business. That business took videos, pictures of our kids at our schools. It also received money of about $27,000 from our educational fund. I have questions and concerns about that. I also have, where we've been outside, we've been relocating things for summer programs, our mayor's family member received $16,000 for six weeks of work. You all should be concerned where your educational fund and tax dollars are going. I know I am. The property on 1426 Roosevelt Road was just sold. The village of Broadview got that building at no cost. What will we receive back into our government fund or municipal funds for this property? It's very concerning to me. Also, the 1426 Roosevelt Road building is owned by Intelligent Digital Holdings LLC. Look it up, you might be surprised who the owner is. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor Board of Trustees, people in detention. My name is Matt Ames, I'm a resident here in Broadview. Since 2009, I've been here and I've watched the council where I've not seen a tendence like this since then. It was misguided then, and I think it's misguided now. And I tell you why. I know for a fact that the allegations against our police department is not true at all. I've served this village as an elected official and as an appointed official since 2009. I've had the pleasure of working alongside four police chiefs. And this is the only one that has the entire department accountable. You want to talk about it? You can. As relates to what I've seen out here at B Street, who is the guy that called me a Incorrect. And I tell you why it's incorrect. Because, for me, what I'm trying to do is avoid the confrontation that I've witnessed over the last few months, mushroom, and blow up into what it is now. None of you people live in the village of Broadview, but yet you go and demand rights for your First Amendment rights, contrary to my rights to live safe and free and without harassment, without harassment, I promise you, you know, without harassment. And that being said, I've witnessed agitators, some of which are still in this room right now, and the commission of functions like putting down emergency walls. I watched the I.D.A. crew do that and was berated. I watched our police officers stand with folks in their faces, nose to nose, threatening them, telling them that they're on the wrong side, and all they're there to do is protect you all. So as it relates to me, the guy you think pulled a coward move and removing your tent, it wasn't that. It was the fact that we received numerous phone calls about what appeared to be a homeless incantation. You're right. The graciousness of the police chief and the mayor was to allow for a medical tent to be erected, and the fact that, to your point, you guys, well, at least some of you, I don't want to say all of you, I don't want to make a sweeping indictment, decided to push the limits, decided to create an unwanted and unsightly situation here in Broadview of what, by the way, you don't pay any taxes, and I understand what your fight might be.
Provided some shit does.
Okay?
Yeah, three minutes?
And I am gonna conclude with this.
Three minutes?
Okay? As Mayor, I support, you have your time up, man. To protect the residents of Broadview, which I am one. And what I will say, Mayor...
Four minutes now.
Is keep up your good work. Came from the political agitators that are in the audience.
Fifteen seconds now.
Are the same people.
We're getting this media.
Four minutes and five seconds now. Is she gonna get four minutes too?
Two weeks ago, I was here, this meeting, and what the people didn't realize was, as a fellow activist, a protester, was that we were here to observe. And clearly, this group is against America. And so, being that you're against America, then America's gonna meet you in protest. Let's go head to head on protest. I'm gonna give you something to smile on now, okay? Matter of fact, we don't ever talk no more.
Thank you, that concludes our public comments.
Four more minutes.
Took out four more minutes.
Next is Noah Lester.
Hi, I'm Noah. I've been protesting at the Broadview Detention Center for a month now. When I came here, I had seen the videos on the news that show very intense moments, and I was alone, so I was a little scared. Soon as I got here, I met a community of great people at a nearby aid tent. This tent held resources for not only protesters, but the families who had had loved ones taken, when they were lost in a maze of concrete barriers, they could get help and directions, and what to do to get medication to their family members. On October 30th at 7:00 p.m., the city of Broadview waited until there was a few people left and moved in with police, a dump truck, a tractor, and took it down. That tent symbolized unity and hope, and a constant presence standing against the kidnapping and oppression happening at this facility. And food, water, community donations were picked up by a tractor while Broadview Police blocked the street, treating us as if we're evil people. I think this sets a dangerous precedent. It doesn't make it okay that you left our supplies sitting in a container rather than in a landfill. It was more than items being taken away, it was like watching our community being oppressed and our voices being silenced. Mayor Thompson, I don't understand your actions. You already push us out every day at 6:00 p.m., and you keep us public within concrete barriers. You don't need to get rid of our tent. We didn't walk out last week despite you. We walked out because to chalk up our presence here to one person who had a beer is disrespectful to everyone who volunteers their time here, fighting for people stuck in that board up building. And this was one final kick in the gut. It's done now, you can kick us off Lexington, but we will be back, even with us knowing next week, we'll be here every day as a voice for those detainees. We will not be driven away. Thank you.
Say it louder, say it louder, I couldn't hear you. Say it louder.
Who's next? Next is Daniel Saul.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Schaus. I want to talk about how, one thing that seems to be brought up here from people that are against us as the protesters is that this only affects the village of Broadview. When the great leader of the state of Illinois is affected just as hard, if not harder, because they are actively targeting certain towns and neighborhoods for their attacks. And to try to come and tell us that safety is more important than our rights and our ability to hold our government accountable is just absurd. We shouldn't be able to be on the sidewalk, looking in front of that building, expressing our freedom of speech, while also being able to document anything that we can and hold the federal government accountable. Without being able to do that, all you are doing is allowing them to use a processing center and a detention center where we don't know how many people are held, we don't know how long they're being held any longer because we can no longer videotape them, we don't know any of the situations of what's happening to these people, other than we receive ambulance every other day coming out of there. It's absurd, it's unnecessary, and you are just aggravating as much as, I don't know, I'm just really pissed off that this is being handled. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
So that concludes our comments.
Thank you, Governor President. Next is I can tell, village president, reporter, Mayor, Mr. Thompson.
So thank you, Mr. President. I want to address, I don't show a video too, but I want to address the residents first. I want to address Ms. Angela Patterson, because she kind of has a sex toy business. I have a right to own businesses, which is a consulting business that I do have, so that's a correction. As it relates to a family member being paid $16,000 for whatever services she's selling for, my daughter is a school teacher, and she actually works at Lindau for the summer program, the summer school. She teaches freedom school, and she qualifies to do the job. She's highly qualified. So I just want to clear the record, but let's not evade the fact that our CPA, Mr. Time Hood, is a CPA. I find that's a right, he is a CPA, so let me just put that in her terms of fact. As it relates to 25 abandoned buildings, I'm not sure if you got some thought on that, whether it hurt you, but I want to let you know, she ran out of gas, this is political, she let it just sneak into some company election she lost. And what she don't tell you is, is that her husband attacked a parent over at Lindau School with a physical attack, which she's a guest on administrative leave for his current job, but harassing that parent. So if we don't talk about truth and transparency, what are all your hands on the table? Unless you're bringing food, unless you're transparent. Now, as it relates to Ms. Francine Smith, as I said before, that incident happened, my condolences to you and your family. Matter of fact, matter of fact, we met with, this is at the time when Commissioner Boyton was the first district commissioner for Cook County. We had you and your family in the office, and we had a conversation with you. Nothing has changed with whatever the problem, I don't know what the process is as the residents of Broadview, but I've always showed you love, kindness, and compassion toward that time, leaving your... So, but this is not time for us to go back now. I just want to clear the record on the accusations that you put out, the comment, and I have to lay with the truth to this. As it relates to, we did leave, we did leave, and we had a very good conversation as it relates to what took place as it was to the tent. But what you fell into telling anybody is, the medical tent that Karen asked us for, we provided that, and we thought it was a great idea on October 6th. But as time went on, people started with furniture, we had propane tanks in there, all kinds of stuff, we ended up... We didn't have what was wanted, so can you play the video for me, please? Next is Karen Byer.
Um, so first of all, I would just like to, um, thank you, and your, um, town, and for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm not living in Broadview because I am your neighbor and my sister. Um, and, um, so basically, I'm here in my [inaudible] because there are like two hours, this thing, the hours of, uh, that people are able to protest over the, um, high facility. So, my question is that, I'm here on behalf of the governor's office that has been named in first name test, that is now over in Lexington. Um, it was moved to Lexington after the first tent that we had was ransacked, um, by federal agencies. Um, and many of the tents that were donated were spoilt. So we had to get new supplies. The reason that we threatened to have to have them first place was because, um, one of the first times where chemical communications were destroyed, um, many of your first responders had to respond when the people were taken to the hospital. And we thought that it would be a good, um, service for us to try and take off, take some of that burden away from your first responders. Because basically, you know, three days chemical burns, yeah, respiratory system, the skin. Um, somehow, with the restrictions, we are here to respectfully request for fast exemption so that we may allow you to pretend where it is with the contest and inside. And there have been a couple of volunteers being very strict, volunteers to stay overnight. They've given a lot to make sure that, um, we have them available and that there are more, you know, to, yeah, to [inaudible]. So that is I am here. So I would please respect what your class that we are able to be aware of.
Thank you for the conversation. I do, thank you. I'm going to ask for a whole lot of [inaudible]. You have that picture of a white man who did that one day, and that's [inaudible]. And he can have everything I heard. For [inaudible]. The [bleep] and I see the [inaudible]. A white man that he's sixty-four, and it's not our time.
Oh my God, it's medical supplies, guys, it's medical supplies.
This is bottom court, I have the court. And I do another [inaudible].
That's what she wants us to do. That's what she wanted us to do.
Who are you feeling like? What time do we have to get here to talk?
Like, why can't we have a human to human conversation? Chief, we're politics, right?
Girl, sell out. Pathetic.
Just so you know, you are breaking section fifteen dash eleven dash one from Broadview, from Broadview. Just so you know, you're breaking your own ordinance.
You say you can't [inaudible] here, huh? That you love that. Talking again.
You need to have a conversation, chief. You need to have dialogue with the people.
The Bible, any verse.
You need to shut us out.
You need to start doing your job, man. You need to start doing your job.
Why don't you come out and have a conversation? Why don't we go on and have a conversation? Why don't we sit down and use work? Instead of trying to create some narrative that doesn't exist. It's a narrative that doesn't exist. You are either aiding the [inaudible].
You swore an oath to the Constitution, you're breaking your oath.
The federal government, everything you're saying.
No justice! No peace! No justice!
No peace!
No racism!
No peace!
No justice! No racism! 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 No justice! No justice!
You get a card, but you gotta stop. That's all I'm asking you. You have to do your job.
Save my life, man!
She's smiling at the shame. That's crazy. It's actually nuts. Corrupt as hell.
Shame on you!
Save my life!
Shame on you!
Save my life!
Let's go!
It's not on your soul for fifty cents. No, I say it's [inaudible].
This is what democracy looks like. Shame on what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Shame on what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Shame on what democracy looks like. Shame on what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Shame on what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Let's go.
That is not all, that is seventeen.
Pulling the truck. Pulling the truck. Pulling the truck.
What do you say? 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 Which are you fucking Broadview fools ignoring us together? I don't know if we need to let you know the war.
Let's go.
Why do you fool? You bullshit, why do you fool?
Backtown Hall, home fifteen, that's six thirty, I'll call back. My [inaudible].
I'm so [inaudible].
Can you think for yourself? I didn't hear what you said. Can you think for yourself? Are you [inaudible]? I'm asking that person, as a fucking human being, are you able to think for yourself? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you able to think for yourself? Bunch of bullshits, dude. Any of you think for your fucking selves, genuinely.
Keep moving, let's go!
Open that window, Riz. Bunch of fuckin' idiots.
No justice!
No peace!
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 Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
No, but you saying the wrong shit.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Show them what democracy looks like.
This is what democracy looks like.
Yeah, he's still part of the protest. Well, one of them does. I live here too, and I got it all surprised. They're perfectly happy with their tax dollars.
Let him protest the way he want to. He got a right to say what he want to say.
Wait, right now. We got, let's back away. Yo, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's not because we started thinking the terms, and then she's like, "Oh, we're in there." She's like, "I got a video of your couches," and then showed volunteers.
No. About the children, everything about the tents were organized.
And they took pictures right before we did.
Yeah.